Light up. My light turns on. Am I live?
All right, good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. And our pledge today. Yes, okay, be led by Potomac Elementary School.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the state's honor and to the republic, which stands one nation under God.
All right, please be seated, except for our guests of honor. Please step up to the podium. Would you guys like to tell us a little bit about yourselves? Introduce yourselves.
Guys, come over here.
Tell us what our hawks are up to lately.
So this is Potomac Elementary, P E S N E H S Clubs, which stands for National Elementary Honor Society. And these few were told today that they are officially selected, so among the other ones that were given their letter today as well. So they graciously volunteered to come today on a moment's notice and pop in and say the Pledge of Allegiance for us. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and then I'm gonna say just a little bit about our club. So come on over.
I'm Rayaano.
My name is Addison.
All right.
Hi, I'm Jake.
Hi, I'm Matthew.
My name's Daryl.
All right, welcome, and congratulations.
So they are fifth graders at Potomac Elementary, and what they will be doing is a lot of community things and also school in-house things as well. We've done spring carnival, we've done food drive, we've done cleanup, and they are required to maintain A B grades throughout their year as part of the Honor Society. And they do a really good job, so they kind of prove themselves worthy of becoming part of the club. So, thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl, for stopping on the way.
Yes, certainly. All right, at this time, we will move on to public and employee comment. Ms. Rinko? We do not have any. Okay. Mr. Vance, do we have any comment online? Ah, all right, we will sit tight for a moment then.
Good afternoon, board members. This is Haley Baker. I am a Trigger Lane resident. I noticed that this, the J E C policy is not on the agenda this evening. However, I would like to make you aware of some of the things that I may have found, you also found possible as well. In looking at the district lines for the schools, it is, and it does appear to me, that Trigger Lane is the only instance where there is a line cut down the middle of a road. The others on Seal St. Side are all cut off by wood lines, and there are no houses near that line. Also, by the Potomac line, there's also, the line cuts through the Potomac River. In this case, I do believe, and I feel in my heart, that we should, or I apologize, I would ask that you would reconsider amending this policy due to those district lines, and it being apparent that Trigger Lane is pointed out in this case. And I believe that we should, as parents, be able to have the option to send our kids to King George County Schools. On another note, in the policy, a couple different policies, it states that kids who are in a military family, or those coming from other countries, foreign exchange students, they have the ability to choose which school district they would like to go to. The variance form that is filled out by an employee who works at King George County Schools, obviously, you know, they have the option to have their kids go there. One of the options on the variance form for a non-resident is that the child's childcare is actually in King George County. I know my child's childcare is in King George County, and I know a lot of the other residents on Trigger Lane also have their childcare in King George County. Once again, I do appreciate you taking the time to look at this and investigate further. I do hope that we can come to a resolution where we do have the option to go to King George County Schools, and that's all. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, was that Ms. Baker? Baker, okay, yeah, that's what I was tracking to. Thank you. All right, okay. So I would like to first welcome our student representative, Devon Archer, who is with us from the, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You have what? That's, that's fine. You can, you can, you can come up. I'm sorry, while he's signing in, Devon, we are excited to have you join us. Hopefully you won't be too bored by the goings-ons up here, but we're happy to have you and hear about what's going on at the middle school. So we hope you're having a good year so far. So, thank you. Yep, go ahead. Yep, so we'll ask that you state your name, your relation to the school division, the voting district in which you reside, and then we'll ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. So, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here. My name is Travis Potter. I have two daughters in King George High School. One is during her last year, and the other one is in her sophomore year. My topic is maybe more for adults' ears, so it's up to you if you still want to have a student rep here. But it is concern for safety, because my daughter, my youngest daughter has recently had a run-in where herself, a couple classmates, and her teacher even heard a student threaten safety of other students in the classroom, or in the school. And I know there's probably been some talk about it online with social media and whatnot. I had a face-to-face meeting with the principal and vice principal of King George High School, because when I found out with my daughter, I came to school, you know, to talk with the principal, and guess, pull my daughters out for the day. My one daughter is definitely shaken up and scared to return to school. My concern is that apparently, this is the first time, supposedly last year, there may have been a threat as well. The parents aren't getting information about when these things happen, so the parents can make a decision about whether, what to do with their child, and maybe it's public school, a fit for your child, or it's private school, or homeschool. All these things would be options to the parents, and these things are things that parents do really want to know, even though they are sensitive and sometimes scary subjects. I spoke with the principal, so I had to approach, no investigation was done for my child, no investigation was done to my home, or other students that were part of her classroom that tried to express concern got turned away. So, things are being posted now that the investigation is closed, there is no threat. But it's procedure that, you know, people get talked to during these investigation committees, that these things aren't happening, but it's being posted that it, it's already resolved. So my point is, parents need to know these things, need to know about the concerns and welfare of their child, and red, possible red flags in the, in the community. So, I urge that these things be brought up to, to parents, not just be kept hidden, and actual investigations get completed, instead of sending, turning students away, and not informing parents. It's really the gist of my concerns here. Today, I just, my youngest daughter doesn't want to go back, so my only option was to enroll her in homeschool. So I submitted that today, actually, to the Board of Education, and got all, everything in line for that. But my other daughter, who is, well, she's on her last year, a couple months away from turning 18, so it's not a good option for her to drop everything and move to that situation. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Potter. All right, at this time, do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. For consideration, we have minutes from the August 2nd, 2022 special meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented concerning the minutes of the August 2nd, 2020 special meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next for consideration on our action item list this evening is the FY22 budget reconciliation. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, if you remember, we discussed this at the last school board meeting. I'll reiterate some of the talking points. Fund 250 of the school division's annual operating budget is divided up, divided up into six categories, as we know, and at the end of each fiscal year, final transfers, which typically were an administrative process, are worked out to rectify any of those subcategories in Fund 250. This year, it's recommended that we bring this to the board. It was suggested through the auditing process that we make sure that we do that moving forward. So my recommendation would to be, to be to approve the budget transfers and budget amendments as presented, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the budget transfers and budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, a little bit.
Mr. Rolls?
Oh, aside, I was sent an email as well. Just want to ask you more questions, Dr. Boyd. So, trying to have a little trouble reading these forms. So, is there somewhere we can look to see that the net change from one category to the other? I mean, I noted before that the description for most of these are salaries. But, I mean, that could probably come under several different of the six major categories. Can you, is there anywhere to look to be clear on exactly where it's moving from?
Yeah, Ms. Williams, would you like to? Ms. Williams is here. She's our expert on all, on all things financial. I'll let you go ahead. I don't want to steal your thunder.
Good evening. Mr. Rolls, what exactly is your question? I mean, we're moving the funds from the salary lines, because there was money in the positive there, and we're transferring to lines that were in the negatives.
So I was highlighting the six categories here, and I missed the first one. So are all those salary, are most of the salary items from the major category of instruction?
Yes, sir.
And going to operations and maintenance? Is that correct?
They're going to instruction, they're going to admin, they're going to transportation, they're going to technology, and then also facilities.
Okay, so, so just the numerical code is what you have to go off of to understand which of those it's going to?
Okay, so for 61230 through 61320, those are all instruction lines. 621110 is the Board of Supervisor line.
So you're looking at our department code?
Yes, sir. The 6131 through 613400 is transportation. 68100 is technology. And on the second page is all maintenance and facilities.
All right, thank you. I guess this probably is trying to get those codes just to be able to see in the future. I'll maybe just follow up with an email.
Okay.
That's good for now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next up, we have our discussion items. So we'll begin with the USDA Supply Chain Assistance Funding. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, the topic is the USDA Supply Chain Assistance Funding, and this is an allocation through the U.S. Department of Agriculture/ Food Nutrition Service, which is the King George County Schools, I'll just drop down to the bottom, which is the important part here. Nutrition Department has been allocated $77,280.36 from the SCA funds. These funds will be used exclusively for the purposes specified above. They must be accounted for separately from the school lunch fund. Accordingly, the reason we need the board to approve this this evening is so that we can create the account codes. If you guys remember, create the account codes in order to manage these funds, we need board approval. So my, the superintendent's recommendation would be to approve, approve the motion to accept the $77,280.36 in supply chain assistance funds for the, for the purposes specified.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Dr. Boyd?
I'll make a motion that we approve the motion to accept the $77,280.36 in supply chain assistance funds for the purpose specified.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You said there was a number code, is it going to be associated with this? Is that right?
This will also have a number code associated with it, yes.
And it's a new one?
It'll be a new one. In fact, that's why we need board approval, so that we can create those new codes in order to put that money in place in our budget.
Okay, so that code has already been established, it's just a matter of waiting for our approval, is that right?
I think, actually, we need your approval to get the codes established.
Oh, all right.
My understanding, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to our policy manual updates. So I will walk through the updates one by one. If you have questions or comments on any of them, please speak up as appropriate. So first, the first policy for discussion is the policy AC, non-discrimination.
Yes, I have questions. Do you also, Mr. Rolls? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Bush?
All right, well, first of all, when I looked this up, I first looked, and so often on these updates, there's words that are crossed out, or words that are added, et cetera. And when I looked at this update, it refers to the 127, I think it is, and it also refers to 22 dot 1 dash 26, excuse, 2, 26 dot 2. And as I read that, it says that this is related to acceptance in the governor's school. Now, I'm assuming that they just put this under our non-discrimination clause, because it, and I guess in our minds, it fits there as, rather than a separate issue. But I wasn't here when the non-discrimination AC was approved in August the 9th of 2021, that was the other board. But I will say that what they're asking for here in an update is two areas, and I can read them, if I may, the update, and this is again, 22 dot 1 dash 2, 26 dot 2, the academic year, governor's schools, certain practices prohibited and required. That's what the update is. A, no academic year, governor's school, or governing board member, director, administrator, or employee thereof shall discriminate against any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the process of admitting students to such school. Each local school board that jointly manages and controls a regional academic year, governor's school pursuant to 22 dot 1 to 26, shall collaborate to ensure that each public middle school that is eligible to send students to attend such governor's school offers coursework, curriculum, and instruction that is comparable in content and in rigor in order to provide each student in each such middle school with the opportunity to gain admission to and excel academically at such governor's school. I totally agree with this update. However, I do not agree that it fits with the discrimination, non-discrimination clause that we currently have in our policy, because I like, I like the statement listed in this update, when it says that we shall not discriminate against any individual group based on race, sex, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. The wording that we currently have in our non-discrimination policy AC, I know that was done by the last board, I don't agree with those words at all.
With which words, again?
Those words in our current policy say, "The King George County School Board is committed to non-discrimination with regard to sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, race, color, national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, age, marital status, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, military status, genetic information, or any other characteristic protected by law. This commitment prevails in all such, in all of its policies, practices concerning staff, students, educational programs, and services, and individuals and entities with whom the board does business." I guess what I'm saying here is that I have no problem with this governor's school, and I actually like the way they talked about the non-discrimination policy. It's, and I'm not sure how to word this, because I just don't think it fits under our non-discrimination policy as it stands, because they used a totally different criteria for the governor's school acceptance than is in our non-discrimination clause, policy here, which I don't agree with all of those words.
So, which words don't you agree with?
The non-discrimination policy that King George County School Board has currently...
Right, I understand. So which particular, I mean, there's a whole paragraph, I'm not connecting.
The, where it says, "regard to sex," and the next 15 or 20 words that are there, I think this is another discussion, Madam Chair, that we could, this is going to continue on and on and on and on. In other words, the kinds of things that we could be discriminating against, the list is going to continue to grow and grow and grow. My point is, I would like us to see something much simpler, rather than having to revisit this every year, every time that there are changes. Now, it is curious as to why they're talking about this in relationship to the governor's school, why they didn't use all those words, but I appreciate that they didn't. So what I'm saying is that I would approve this as an update, but not that it fits under our non-discrimination clause as it's written.
Okay, Mr. Bush, so I guess I have an opinion, but I would like to defer to Dr. Boyd. Do you have any particular insight to share on this subject?
No, I'll let you guys continue the debate. Go right ahead.
Okay, so my, my assumption, Mr. Bush, would be that, based on the Virginia Code, right, that says, "Each local school board that jointly manages and controls a regional academic year, governor's school," which would apply to us as we're involved with governor's schools, right? So, this, to me, falls under our own, it's a subset, right, essentially, of our own non-discrimination policy, in that it says, we, while we do not, we, we have a policy to not discriminate in our own schools, that, that would carry forth into our, you know, participation in the governor's schools, right, that our students attend, so and so forth. So I don't see the...
My point is, is that I agree that by us writing that it goes under the non-discrimination policy, we are assuming this is a subset of that policy. I don't agree with our policy.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have a, unless we make this a separate category, I cannot, I mean, I'm one vote, but I will not approve it.
Okay. Further discussion?
I have different concerns. I mean, so, I want to ask first, Mr. Bush, what you're saying is that, just as far as adding as a reference here, you, you agree with the code change they want to make, as far as not discriminating for admittance to governor's school? It's just, that you like, that's like more targeted list, and you just want to change this list as it is?
Yeah, I, I like what they said about the governor's school.
Right.
But I do not agree that if we place it under our non-discrimination clause, which this board did not approve, the last board did, that's what I'm having a problem with.
And I'll agree. That's actually my, I have several issues here. The first one is that it is so incredibly generic, it's not very helpful. Because you're like, well, non-discrimination, what does that mean? And then you go, you look at the Virginia Code, and it talks about specific instances. Okay, so when, because I'll back up here for a second. So discrimination, we, only we hear the word discrimination, some of us here think immediately illegal discrimination, but that's not the only use of that word. I mean, there is discrimination that is appropriate and makes sense, and so...
Can you give us an example?
I will. So, for instance, I look at a student, and they say, man, I just got done with basketball practice, I need to go to locker room and shower up and get cleaned up. That is one, and they say, I want to go to the, you know, to the girls' locker room and shower up and get cleaned up. That's one thing, if the person I'm talking to is a female, it's another if it's, if it's a male student. So I'm going to discriminate on the basis of sex in that, that situation, because obviously, it makes difference whether what the sex the student is, in that case. But if it's sex in terms of whether we let them into the governor's school or not, it doesn't matter for that, obviously, and for most other things. But there are things, we have different women's and boys bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports. They're all different, because boys and girls are different. I mean, I know it sounds like common sense, but I think we, you know, it's common as lately.
I think to move forward, if I can make a suggestion with this, would be that, you know, I don't have a problem approving this update with the caveat that this board will revisit our current non-discrimination clause.
So I would offer, so in jotting down the differences between things that apparently some of us are and are not okay discriminating against, so the, you know, it sounds to me like, based on the example given, that we think it is okay to discriminate against some of these things, and not others, which concerns me.
So when I picked up my sports coat this morning, I, I had a different choice. I had to discriminate between which one I put on. I chose, I discriminated against putting on the one that needs to go to cleaners, and then put this one on. So I mean, just, it's the use of the word. So, is there a problem with the statement that boys aren't going to go in the girls' locker rooms, and vice versa?
So I think the, that is, I don't believe that is a part of this non-discrimination policy. I think this is a statement, right, we're committed to, I think, I, I understand where this conversation is going, and I think that is a separate conversation. So I, if there is a discussion to be had on that subject, I would like to see that brought back as a request for a follow-on discussion item at another board meeting. I don't, I don't agree that, I mean, I agree with the non-discrimination policy. I believe that the King George County School Board should be committed to non-discrimination with regard to sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, race, color, national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, age, marital status, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, military status, genetic information, or any other characteristic protected by law. I think that non-discrimination policy keeps us in compliance with Virginia state law. So I disagree with not agreeing with the policy. So...
But, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
The issue, as Mr. Bush has, has been very careful to point out, and thank you for doing this, is that we're looking at a specific addition to the policy. We are not looking for this discussion at changing this policy. We are looking at adding an addition that has been provided by, I assume, V S B A. And frankly, I, I think, as representatives on the various governor's schools, we may well review this more at that level, and then come back. So I think there are a lot of issues, but, but I agree with Mr. Bush that So I think there are a lot of issues, but, but I agree with Mr. Bush that the nondiscrimination in regard to the governor's school is appropriate to add. I, I don't know about the wording because I think it will be up for review at several different levels. But if we can narrow in on this particular issue, adding the nondiscrimination clause on admission to governor's school process, that is our focus tonight.
And I would agree if we could, I know it's assumed it would just go under this and that's what I would have a problem with because we need to talk about this. However, if we were to add paragraph A and B, which is exactly what they're asking us to do, to update it, rather than assuming that it just fits under it, let's write it.
You want to write what, a new?
No, just simply write exactly what they, they have, they didn't, right? But they, the update that they're referring to, I downloaded and here it is. I read it.
Yep.
I would like to say, let's approve this update, which is what they're asking for, but since it's not written in our code, let's put it in there and then we can talk about our general nondiscrimination policy at another meeting as you suggested.
So you want to take our, the policy AC as it is and add and just include the language from the code amendment instead of just having the...
In other words, add academic year governor school, practice, certain practices and prohibited required, A and B enlist them, just exactly like it's been quoted from V S B A.
So, okay, I'm, I guess I'm just wondering what the, what, um, what does that accomplish when the legal reference is already included from the code of Virginia?
Well, okay, since I have a disagreement with this large one, they're making, you're making an assumption that anything that we have to do related to nondiscrimination issues from this point on will automatically come under this. Okay, I, I don't mind being specific with this one, understanding just as you said, it's a larger discussion and we can go back to our nondiscrimination policy at another meeting. But in the meantime, in order to approve this, let's write it. Let's put it here.
So we want to, we want to add to the policy to approve it, to review it again in the future?
Yes.
I don't understand.
For this particular motion, add A and B as written, you can look it up, it's twenty-two point one.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yep, I have it.
Add that to our nondiscrimination policy, which we do a lot of times, just simply add, uh, entrance, uh, accen- entrance into governor's school, practices, uh, required, and then just put A and B.
Okay.
So I would, well, I would make a motion of that if, but I'm waiting for further discussion.
Okay, so, so it's for discussion, right?
Yeah, right, it's not even action.
Bring it, right, it's not an action, so it's for discussion. So the, for consensus, right, could be that we would have that, have this policy returned to us with that language added to it.
Right.
The intent?
Yes.
That's what would come back to us for action at the next meeting, Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, I guess, this to my point is, this is very broad, the way it's written. So I would like to follow up with Ms. Ewing at V S B A, which I've not had a chance to do yet because, yeah, this is just very generic. It just lists like everything and then it just, it puts references down here. If you actually want to know how that's applied, you have to go dig into the Virginia code, which seems odd because we don't really do that for too many of our other policies. It's pretty much the policy is what the law is, it's just worded so you can clearly see it. Whereas here, if you want to dig into exactly how this is applied, then you, you have to get, go into the law and read it, which is, so financially, right, Mr. Bush, you're saying you want to actually take more of the verbiage from the actual law for the governor's school, put it here.
And I would love to have that verbiage in our policy, but I, for now, that's another discussion.
Okay, just, I guess...
Lots of areas here that they, we do that for potentially.
So I'll just add, I mean, all the policies, I'm not sure what the distinction was between this policy having legal references from, for state statute because policies have state statutes referenced at the bottom of...
Well, most of...
They all do, but they, you don't normally have to read them to understand what the policy is.
Right.
Here, you kind of need to more so.
Oh, I guess I didn't have to read it to understand what the policy was, but okay, I guess that's the difference. Okay. So you want this to come back next meeting with the explicit language from the code? So the A and B sections added?
Yes. And also, obviously, at a future date, we discuss this as a board.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would not expect us to be able to vote on that next time. This is probably like a multi-discussion type thing. If we're gonna break one out, I don't know why we wouldn't break out more.
Break out more what?
Of the specific areas. For instance, one thing that I did not realize till recently is like that reference, it must have been approved last year, the twenty-two dot one dash twenty-three dot three, that's the law passed by the twenty-twenty General Assembly that required, um, V D O E to produce a transgender model policy and then for the school boards to create their own based off of that. And so I understood that King, King George didn't adopt that and really just handled it by considering it covered by the, um, anti-bullying policy that we have, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
I said, I understood that King George didn't create, I guess we didn't explicitly create a transgender, um, policy ourselves. We just considered it covered by the anti-bullying policy. However, there is, there are some opinions that when you, by taking this nondiscrimination policy and then adding to the legal references, the, the code that deals with the transgender model policy, that we're effectively saying that what if it says in there is discrimination is what, we're, we're agreeing with that, the model policy with, with this thing, which I don't know that's necessarily was the intent. That, that is a concern of mine that, because like I said, discrimination, you may, you may disagree, but discrimination, the word vocabulary word is not bad. It's, it's, if you're discriminating for the wrong reasons and you're using race or sex to hire, which should have absolutely nothing to do with hiring, but like I showed, made examples of, there are situations where sex, for instance, would matter. We need to be clear about what's appropriate and what's not. And I think that this is so generic, it's not that helpful for making...
So, Mr. Rolls, what you're saying is, is you'd rather discuss our entire nondiscrimination policy. Is that what I hear you saying?
Right, so I don't know about the benefit of picking, for instance, just the governor's school and breaking that one thing out and then leaving everything else in like one big ball as opposed to getting some more clarity.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Because you're talking about adding the specifically language only for the governor's school part, but I mean, there's what, like five or six different references here from Virginia code that all kind of deal with different things.
But in this one, it was only talking about the governor's school?
Right, but you're talking about rewriting the, the policy to fix just that. So if we were gonna rewrite it, I don't know why we went to do this.
That's what I was saying. So what you're asking is we should look at the whole policy rather than just simply adding this one about the governor's schools, what you're saying?
Right.
But that's, I'm sorry, that's a much larger discussion than we have time or the agenda item to do tonight.
Correct. I just want to start the conversation and recognize that it is a rather large undertaking and certainly gathering information we need, and that'd be from the V S B A. Then I, I sent you all a letter produced by the founding, was it Found and Freedoms Legal Center, where they put that out when this was first released back in last year to kind of deal with the issue, having some constitutional concerns with the, um, that transgender model policy that V D O E put out. And trying to look, I don't think they've said anything more about it since then. That was this past March, well, March twenty, twenty-one, or April.
So what are you suggesting we do, Mr. Rolls?
Well, I think we need some investigation. I would like to talk to Ms. Ewing, like I said, at V S B A, and then also be good to maybe ask to talk to our lawyer about this, best way to approach this.
Doctor who?
Uh, is that Ms.?
He said Ms. Ewing, and then the other references to Ms. Haney.
Yeah, we could do a closed meeting perhaps. I don't know if next time, the best time to do that. Uh, and so I know you, we could, we don't have to do all this right away, but the, the thing is we have to review all these policies every five years. And so I think really the best way to stay on top of them is as they come up, if there's an issue, we, we deal with it then. We see it later, then there's going to be something else the next time, you know, so...
That's a good point. So you'd like to see us not, um, not deal with this at all, but then at the next board meeting to deal with this as an agenda item with changing this nondiscrimination policy and just put this on hold until we deal with that? Is that what you're saying?
And try to make arrangements with Ms. Haney to have a...
And make, yeah, it's some information before we do that?
Okay, so is that the act, that's the, that's the desire to set up a time to meet with Ms. Haney and, and discuss specifically what, which, I, I...
How we could improve this, uh, policy. I don't, and talking to Ewing to find out whether from a V S B A perspective, it's like take it or leave it. I mean, if they have any willingness to adjust it or...
So I mean, the V S B A policy is right, they're written to keep us in compliance with state statute, right? That's, that's the, right, we've, I feel like we've been through this before with other policies, right? So that's, that's the intent.
We all understand that.
Yeah, okay. So the, so, um, so my understanding is that you want to tackle this policy, maybe like legal reference by legal reference or something along those lines? Is that accurate?
Well, just to give a little, make it less generic, as I've said.
Okay, so, but so there are a lot of, I mean, so it sounded to me like you, we didn't want to, um, move on just the governor's school statute addition, um, because there are others in here. So it would look to me like there are, you know, quite a few state, um, um, U S code references, a C F R reference, um, Constitution of Virginia reference, and then numerous Virginia state code references. So, um, is the intent to tackle each one of them, one by one? I don't, um, you know, we, so we discussed the governor's school statute specifically. Do you want to visit each one of them? Is that the intent?
I, can I say something?
I was, well, I'll answer real quick then. Uh, I, I focus on the code of Virginia. So, yeah, I, again, I haven't had a chance to talk to V S B A, but I'd like, I'd like to get her taken as far as breaking and get her logic why she didn't go into more detail as some of the other policies are. And that, that'll be, that'll help guide the discussion once we have that.
Okay, so is the first step, you want to talk to Ms. Ewing and then we'll...
Get input.
...discuss in our next meeting?
Yeah, make a discussion item again next time as opposed to action.
And, and not deal with this one until we settle that?
I'm sorry, say again?
And not deal with the governor's school until we settle what you're talking about? That's your recommendation?
Right.
All right, I'll, I'll go with that.
Okay, so the first step is gathering, so between now and the next meeting, there's going to be information gathered from Ms. Ewing and then we will reconvene after that. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And let, let me clarify. So we're, we're going to take each one of these issues, the basis of nondiscrimination, and have Ms. Haney and Ms. Ewing review the policy in regard to all of these items? Is that...
I think what he's saying is just simply our nondiscrimination policy here, this one paragraph.
Yes.
Let's just get another opinion as to, you know, and we can discuss this, how this came to be, the wording that's here. And obviously, the thing we're sort of referencing a little bit is could we make a policy change that might go against the state? You know, those are part of the discussions and all this. And what could we change? How could we make this maybe more effective? How could we, rather than continuing every time something turns around, we're adding something else and we're adding, because this is, list is getting quite large in terms of the things that we need to be nondiscrimination against. And there's, I think, words that could be used that would cover a lot of these without having to continue to add them. So anyway, it's a discussion. We don't need to have it all now.
Yeah.
So I'm agreeing with Mr. Rolls is saying, let's gather some more information and we can have a further discussion when we're a little more informed.
Okay.
I have concern that this is going to be a very lengthy discussion.
Correct.
Uh, there are so many references, both legal references, Supreme Court. I, I myself looked up the latest reference in the Supreme Court of Virginia, um, regarding the application of, of nondiscrimination in the West Point School District. And this was just this month, in fact, last week was filed, July twenty-second. Uh, so, so many of these issues are very current and, um, all of, all of these issues that occur, we see in the policy are there because someone has had an issue with it. Someone has been discriminated against at some point in time, you know, based on these issues. They're real, they're real items that are affecting students and their families. Um, I, I think it's essential that we, if we are going to either create our own policy or change policy, we need time and, um, information gathered. So I would suggest that we put this out further, uh, so that we have time to gather our own information. That piece of information that you sent this afternoon was, was, or whenever you sent it, was simply a legal opinion. I can buy that for a nickel on the street. I, I think there are a lot of different issues in this list. You know, frankly, I remember when students of different colors couldn't drink out of the same water fountain. That was a real issue. I remember when girls were not allowed in school if they were pregnant. I re, I mean, there are reasons for every one of these issues and I, and I feel very strongly that, um, to change a policy of nondiscrimination and go backwards to generic is taking us in the wrong direction.
Ms. Hawk, I think probably there's something, there are many more than the things that are here.
Oh, yes.
You could make this, if you wanted to get specific related to court cases, this would probably be five pages long.
Oh, easily.
I think that's the point. Is, is it possible that we can at least look at this wording that would maybe make some changes that rather than continuing to add, that way something...
That's the discussion, I guess.
Okay.
So I would, I, um, I completely agree with Ms. Hawk and would remind, um, I agree, this is a very long conversation and it will take up a lot of our time and staff time sitting in our meetings discussing it. Um, and I would just remind everyone, we do have a lot of, a lot of critical items coming up on our, on our not-so-distant horizon, including selecting our new superintendent. And I just, there, there will be a lot of time spent, um, you know, yep, budgets, there are, there are a lot of issues that are, you know, you know, not that, that discrimination isn't a, a very serious, very, you know, important issue, but there are many issues that are, you know, are being dealt with in our schools on a regular basis that also take up, um, the time and attention of, of our, of our staff and administration and of our teachers. Um, so I just think we should keep that in mind as we head down this path, um, that this is not just our time that we are spending on this, it is also that of, of everyone else. So keep that in mind. So, so, all right, so I, I agree that I don't know that this necessarily needs to be returned on our next agenda item unless there is, unless we want to piece, like one, you know, one point to tackle at a time.
I agree, and then we just get some information and then we'll see what the next step is next time, which, you know, if we want to try to get some time with Ms. Haney, then we could, that basically be the only point of discussion, like do we want to, want to try and schedule some time with her?
Yeah, I, I don't think we're saying that we absolutely have to make this change in the next month or two. I mean, this discussion is probably going to be ongoing, but we can continue to gather. The more educated that the five of us become in this area, I think the better we'll be able to make decisions. It doesn't mean it has to happen like in two weeks or even a month, but I do think it's something that we can gather as much information as we can to do the best job that we can. Because my fear is, just like I said, this could be five pages long, is let's try to words and things in such a way that it will, um, accomplish the same thing without just simply increasing things.
Maybe it should be five pages long. Just saying.
Or the next thing I think is maybe to just get the opinion of, what was her name again?
Ms. Ewing.
Ms. Ewing, okay.
Ewing, Ms. Ewing.
Okay, I think let's just do it, deal with that right now and put this as far as...
So Ms. Ewing and Ms. Haney next time? Is that the intent? I think starting with Ms. Ewing would be...
Yeah.
I'm fine, I, I'll call Ms. Ewing and we can talk about it next time, whether I'm rigging Ms. Haney or not.
Okay.
Later.
Sounds good.
That sounds fine. Okay.
And then not deal with this particular update, at least, let's just, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting an update on hold for a little while.
Agreed, agreed. Okay.
But let's make a quick discussion item next time, is that, Marjorie?
All right, so next we have policy E E A, student transportation services. Policy E E A D, special use of school buses?
Yes, Madam Chair, I, this time I really did look at an awful lot of these. As I read through that policy E E A D, if we remember back, um, I don't know, a period of time ago, either in emails or whatever, it was discussed about using buses for the Dogland Heritage Museum bus tours. As I read through this policy, it's a side thing, I have no problem with approving this, but I would like us to look at that because as I read this, we can use the buses for the Dogland Heritage Museum. There's a lot of criteria that to go through, but it, they can do it. Anyway, so I'm in total agreement with, you know, updating it, that's fine, but that does call into question regards to the update. But that does call into question regards to the updates, is now it looks like that certain entities can use our buses if they follow all the criteria. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
What?
You looked at me, I was, I was just nodding, I agree with that as well.
Pulling the board, certainly, okay. All right, Policy IF, Curriculum Development and Adoption. Policy IGBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities?
Yeah, I'm curious in that one, Madam Chair, is how do we screen? It mentioned about screening the students, let me go to it. IGBA.
You mean the child find?
Yeah, right here, in the, on the bottom, the school board provides all applicable procedural safeguards, including written notice to the parents of the schedule of screening, and if the child fail, fails the screening. When is the screening done?
We do, we do screening when students come into kindergarten, we do.
That's all.
Right. And we also work with social services and, and folks of that, um, in the community that are connected with students that have special needs.
And the daycares and so on.
The daycares and such.
All right, that's all, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay. Policy JFB, Student Involvement in Decision Making?
Yeah, how are those, I'm sorry. How are the views sought for students in decision, how do we do that, Dr. Boyd? How do we seek their, um, their views?
So as a school board or on the school level? I mean, we certainly do it on the school level, uh, every day. We call student groups in, our SCA, our Renaissance Team, and, and on every level, uh, we do it at the school level. Uh, here at the school board, we've got a student rep with us tonight, uh, from the middle school, and also we typically have one from the high school that, uh, would be our, our board's direct, uh, opportunity to intervene with the student representatives.
Thank you. That's all.
I'd like to make a comment that, um, I'm glad you brought up that question, because I, if anything, I, I think we need to do more.
Your mic, Kell.
Oh, sorry. You need a big neon light for me. Um, we need to do more involvement of students in the policymaking. I think it's, it's, um, for example, in, in the nondiscrimination policy, the students ought to be very much involved in reviews and, and information. I, you know, I think, um, maybe we ought to maybe send it back to the student councils to see if they have any ideas about how students can, do they want student focus groups? Um, is there, do they want other kinds of voices? I'd like to hear from the students about how you want to be involved. So, that's just back to you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right, Policy JHCB, Student Immunizations?
Just a question with this is, um, I'm assuming these immunizations, like at the beginning, like it's been for years, you know, measles, Mumps, Rebell, all those kinds of normal immunizations? And polio, yes, several of them, and I'm, I just, I didn't see any addition to any other immunization. So the wording is fine, I don't have any problem with the changes that they made in the wording. In fact, it's very good, the changes they made. I just want to make sure that there's, as far as, Dr. Boyd, that there's been no added immunizations to the traditional ones, that's all.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Policy JHCD-R, Regulation on the Administration of Medication Treatment During School Hours. Policy JHCDF, Medication Treatment Request Form. Policy JHCE, Recommendation of Medication by School Personnel. All right.
I want to ask a question about that. This form that was, um, in our packet, that was the JHCD-F, and it's totally crossed out everything on it, so I'm assuming we don't use that form anymore. So is there no form for treatment request anymore, or is it just?
We use a form, we just didn't believe that it, it should be in the policy manual. We have a form that's updated and we use every year.
That's fine, I assumed it was something like that, it's just that, I just saw it eliminated, and there wasn't a new one. All right.
If we could go back just for a moment, I do have a question, just here, just about the immunizations of policy. Uh, just kind of a general GUS question, doesn't mention exemptions. Do you have any idea about how prevalent exemptions are in, in school?
I don't know an actual number of how many are, uh, asked to be exempt. Is that your question? I can certainly look it up.
Pretty rare, or?
To be honest with you, I would say anecdotally pretty rare, but I don't know an actual percentage today.
I know generally, so that's, that's fine, thanks.
All right, any further questions? Okay, so we'll see all of those back for action next week, with the exception of Policy AC. Accurate, sound good, okay? All right, so next for discussion is a school-based health workforce grant, Dr. Boyd?
Uh, yes, yes, Madam Chair. Um, so again, as, as you guys are accustomed to now, the American Rescue Plan, uh, has, uh, offered a grant. Uh, and in Virginia, it was fifty million dollars that came to Virginia for this particular school-based health workforce grant. Uh, this grant is designed, uh, for initiatives to support school health staff, uh, specifically in the areas of recruitment and retention, retention of school health personnel, and professional and educational development of school health personnel. King George County Schools has been granted seventy-seven thousand dollars in this effort. Uh, the, the funds will need to be, uh, used exclusively for the purposes that I just mentioned above, recruitment and professional development, and they must be encumbered by June 1st, 2023. Uh, and again, we need your approval so that we can create the new codes in order to manage these funds. My recommendation would be to approve a motion to accept seventy-seven thousand dollars in the ARP-HCY funds for the purposes specified.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Are there any questions? So, Dr. Boyd, I had a quick question, um. So just, I know it calls out the, the potential uses for the grants. I was just wondering, we had any, um, like, specific examples? I know we don't typically use those to pay salaries, unless that's the intent. I'm just curious what the thoughts were.
Sure, Ms. Fisher's here this evening, Ms. Fisher. She's the, our expert on our school-based health.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I apologize, I have a sinus infection, so it's hard for me to hear and talk. So, really, we just, because it's not a significant sum of money necessarily, um, and they were very specific categories that we had to allot to it. Um, one thing that we are looking to do is hire, and, and it's only for this current school year, hire an assistant, um, nurse that will be shared between the, um, the middle school and the high school, because their numbers are so large. We're over a thousand at the middle school and fifteen hundred at the high school. Um, additional, uh, funds for overtime for our nurses, for anything that they're doing related to COVID, um, any equipment upgrades for, um, computers and printers, those sorts of things for our nurses. Um, I know our power school system, the state is working to, um, connect the state system with school systems so that they'll talk to each other. Um, and this can help pay for that, so the nurses have access to the statewide database, those sorts of things.
All right, thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, I'm assuming that this has some degree of urgency in accepting this money and creating a code? So even though it's under discussion items, I'm going to, to suggest that we make a motion and work, and approve or disapprove tonight.
I'm certainly willing to entertain a motion.
Um, I'm going to move that we accept, uh, the seventy-seven thousand dollars in ARP-HCY funds for the purpose specified.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next we have the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund for Homeless Children and Youth. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, so along the same lines, these ARP funds, uh, included eight hundred million dollars to support the specific needs of homeless children and youth via the American Rescue Plan. Uh, these, these funds would be used to identify homeless children and to provide homeless children and youth with wraparound services. Uh, King George County Schools has been granted twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent, and that is in two allocations. You can see, one allocation was in October 2021, uh, for nineteen thousand, six hundred, thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, and then April 2022 for one thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, these, these, uh, funds need to be encumbered by September 30th, 2024. Uh, and again, we request school board approval to create these new account codes for these funds. And my recommendation would be, would be to approve a motion to accept twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent in ARP-HCY funds for the purposes specified.
All right, thank you.
Again, I'd like to suggest that there may be some urgency to the need to approve this and set up an, an account code. Uh, so I'm, may I make a motion to do so?
Certainly.
Um, I'm going to move that we accept twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent in ARP-HCY funds for the purpose specified.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to our information items, do we have any committee reports this evening? Mr. Bush? No, Ms. Hock?
No.
Dr. Cutright?
No.
Mr. Rolls?
No.
All right, nor do I. Although I understand that the committees are going to start up again soon, so I look forward to that. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, the only thing I have this evening is that we're required to annually to announce, uh, the locations of our policy manuals throughout the school divisions. So our policy manuals are located, obviously, at the school board office and within the school library at all of our school locations. So I just wanted to add that this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd.
May I ask a question? Do we have a copy at Spook Library?
Actually, yes, ma'am, I think we do also have a, a copy at Spook Library, and
you also reminded me that we have, uh, our entire policy manual online as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Okay, well, we will move on to our board comment. And, Mr. Archer, you are welcome to share with us how things are going at the middle school this year? So far, I know it's still, you know, early start here. Yep, push the, just tell the light, neon light lights up.
All right, well, uh, there's not really much to say so far. Um, it's been a lot smoother as far as, uh, hallways and getting to classes and student behavior in general. I'm not sure if that's just because of the first couple of weeks. Um, so I'd like to wait, uh, and see how that, uh, turns out. Um, but as far as really anything, I think things have been going very smoothly, so I don't have very much to say about that.
Okay, great, well, we are super excited to have you join us, so we look forward to seeing how things develop.
So am I, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Bush, over to you.
Yes, I'd also like to welcome you. Um, we're so glad that you're here, and it's really great. And I think it'll encourage me to stay sitting here rather than switching around. Maybe it'll help me be a little younger in my thinking. Uh, nothing will help that. Um, I want to thank the Potomac Elementary School, um, especially for those in that, um, National Elementary Honor Society, that's fantastic, and those fifth graders. So I want to thank them for being here and leading us in the pledge. And then also, even for the, um, the parents that made comments today. I want to thank both of them, I think it was Ms. Baker and Mr. Putner? Pluckner? Butner, butner, okay, thank you, thank you for your comments today. And, um, as we usually say, it's not necessarily appropriate for us to respond to any of those things, but I do want you to know, parents, that as you make these comments, we do take them serious, and we do talk about them, it's just that usually we take time to process and hear them and so on. Um, also, um, wanted to say that I, I visited the, uh, with Dr. Boyd, the, uh, the, um, King George Elementary School, and then I also visited the high school the other day, and I ate lunch in the high school, and, um, the lunch was really good. And, uh, so that was nice, it was also wonderful eating with the kids, and visited, um, several teachers, and, um, actually went into, uh, Mr. Perry's class, and I was, um, very impressed with, um, what I saw, so, and especially the way he interacts with the students. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush, Ms. Hock?
Um, I, I am just delighted to have our representative from the middle school here, and I look forward to having our high school representative. Student voices are essential. And I think, uh, as Mr. Buckner was referring to, uh, tonight, I don't know that students always feel heard. That they may be heard on some level, but they don't necessarily feel acknowledged and heard. And we need to give more ways, uh, on, on all kinds of topics. Uh, certainly, safety is primary, but all kinds of topics. The students are why we're here in this business. So, and, and as we've seen tonight, we've got really bright students. We, we've got students who share all kinds of expertise. And we, from, from pre-K up to graduation and beyond, we need to listen to our students. Um, on another note, uh, I always like to be reminded that, that students have life outside of school. You know, they really, they don't, they don't sleep in school, they, they go out and they do other things. And I was privileged to be at, um, a black belt ceremony this weekend. Um, and yes, my grandson's getting his black, but, but also, a number of students from our high schools are getting their black belts. And, I mean, and this requires a commitment to academic progress, it requires, uh, focus, it requires years of effort. And I was so proud of, uh, the, the students who were already black belts and getting degrees. And you, you'd be surprised, that there's a very petite young woman who, uh, is very quiet, but I do not want to encounter her in a dark alley at night. Um, and, and she is several degrees of a black belt. Um, it's the, and it, it is just amazing. So I want to, want to give a, a heart welcome, thank you to the families for all of the outside activities, whether it's soccer, or cross-country, or, uh, karate, or dance, or whatever they're doing, it really is worth it. So thank you to parents, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hock, Dr. Cutright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'd like to welcome Devon Archer as our student representative, we appreciate your presence. And we really enjoyed seeing Potomac Elementary students with the National Elementary Honor Society. I'd like to address one issue from my constituents, and that's school bus safety. And since school is just starting, we've been in session two, two weeks, I should say, uh, parents have complained that, um, we aren't really, uh, paying attention to school buses on our highways, so I'd, I'd like to caution all the drivers, myself included, because I'm out in the highway too. And I see school zones, sometimes people are going over the speed limit, especially at King George High School. It's thirty-five miles an hour, and when that school light's flashing, and we need to be aware of that. Uh, we also need to be aware when we see school buses, and we see a yellow light flashing, that means, all of us know this, we just need to be aware of it. Um, we need to slow down, and when the red flashing lights are on, that means we stop immediately. And we need to be careful when our students are getting off the buses. And as I said, motorists must stop until the red light stops, uh, and the extended arm is out. Um, and so we need to pay attention and, um, and not move until the bus begins, start moving before we can start driving again. Uh, and also, I want to mention that we still need bus drivers for any of you that are, uh, looking for positions, or know of people who are looking for bus drivers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cutright, Mr. Rolls?
This is going to be a little dated, but this is my first, uh, meeting since we did the hearing for, about superintendent qualifications. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who, uh, filled out the surveys in the community. It was great getting the feedback, especially the last two questions on the, on the survey, there was open-ended, just telling us about your concerns for the division, and your hopes for the division as well. So I, just seeing that, it made me think that it'd be really great to figure out some way for us to do surveys on a more regular basis, not just every time we get a new superintendent, every decade or so, so. Could be useful, so it's, not, you know, as a public school, we're not quite getting the same feedback as a business, you know, say, where people the same feedback as a business, you know, say where people take their business elsewhere if they if they're not happy. But so the best thing we can do is do surveys to hear from people. I mean, we, of course, come across folks just on the community, but you never know how good of a cross-section of everybody's opinions you're getting when you're just running into a person here and there. So I think that'd be a very useful tool that we should consider. Two things I'd hope Dr. Benson would would be here. So I have some words for him, but without him here, I'm not going to go too great a length. I'll keep it short. But I'll say this is our last school board meeting during his tenure here at with the division. He's given, you know, a decade of exceptional service to the county. So I'm very appreciative to him and all he's done. I know more than one passport member that I've run across has said that hiring him 10 years ago was one of the best things they ever got to do as part of on the school board. So that's saying something. And I didn't forget, you know, but a month ago, I suggested that we all get together and show our passion for learning by sharing about a book or two of our favorite books. But then we do have, I mean, we have to go too rash for this. So the suggestion was to push that off. Maybe we can do that next time so we can move things along. But and again, Devon, so thank you for joining us. It's great to have you. Those are all my comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rolls. So I will repeat some of my colleagues' comments, but I do want to thank the parents who come out to make public comment. We certainly always appreciate hearing from you about, think matters that are of importance to you. So specifically, thank you to Mr. Potter for coming to speak this evening about your concerns about the threat in the schools. Please know that we care very deeply about the safety of our students, and we take your concern very seriously. I did want to share that I was recently appointed by VSPA to the 2023 Federal Relations Committee as the representative for the 7th Congressional District. So the Federal Relations Committee was established several years ago to conduct advocacy efforts on federal issues that impact school divisions in Virginia. So the 2023 VSPA Federal Relations Committee Advocacy Institute, we conducted, excuse me, by VSPA and Alexandria on February 6th and 7th, 2023. So I understand the committee gets to meet with our congressional senators and representatives anyway and discuss school-related issues. So I am very much looking forward to that. I thoroughly enjoyed attending the retirement ceremony for Dr. Benson on Friday. There was a lot of cake, some good punch. It was great to see old board members and fellow superintendents come out to celebrate a wonderful career by Dr. Benson. I know it is unfortunate he's not here this evening, but he will certainly be missed, I know, by us and much more by those of you who have worked with him for an extended period of time. So just want to thank him for his commitment and dedication to the division. He will be thoroughly, thoroughly missed. And lastly, I do want to commend our teachers and staff for an excellent first two weeks so far this school year. I know I've heard challenges from friends and colleagues about with regards to class size, transportation issues, staff shortages from other divisions. And I just want to say that I am super proud of King George because I think we're off to a great start. So thank you to all of you who've made that possible. That is all I have. So if there's nothing more, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to state code section 2.2-3711.a.1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment assignments, substitutes, stipends, retirements, and resignations of employees of the school board.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we're now in.